Good morning, I would like to welcome everyone to the public workshop meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Monday, November 1st, 2010. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order, and before I ask for an acceptance of the agenda, I need to add one item. Todd Ernst had asked to appear before the board today to discuss the bike trails for Kellytown Park, to give an update and a presentation to the board. So I'd like to add that directly after the proclamation, and with that changed to the agenda, I would ask for an acceptance.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Basler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stenyall in favor. Motion carries 5-0. The first item is a proclamation for National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month, and this is in support of it. Whereas November has been designated as National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month, and the Henry County Board of Commissioners desires to support citizens in Henry County in recognizing the symptoms of this life-changing disease, and whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive disease of the brain which attacks the very tool we use to process information to understand, to navigate, to plan, to perform, to communicate, to anticipate, to react, to recognize, and all other aspects of our lives. And whereas because it is a disease of the brain and not the body, there are normally no early-stage physical symptoms, and people can appear healthy and may live for years with this disease. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is being diagnosed in younger individuals, some as young as thirty, and the Social Security Administration now recognizes early onset Alzheimer's disease among the medical conditions which will be given automatic approval for disability benefits. And whereas the Henry County Board of Commissioners encourages individuals to recognize warning signs of dementia, including trouble with new memories, the need to rely on memory helpers, trouble finding words, struggling to complete familiar actions, confusion about time, place, or people, misplacing familiar objects, onset of new depression or irritability, making bad decisions, personality changes, loss of interest in important responsibilities, seeing or hearing things, and/or expressing false beliefs. And now therefore be it proclaimed, the Henry County Board of Commissioners supports the Henry County Senior Services Department in making the public aware of Alzheimer's disease which by the law of averages will touch every family in some way. And be it further proclaimed, the Henry County Board of Commissioners designates November as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month in Henry County and supports research for a cure of this disabling and life-altering disease this first day of November, 2010. And I believe we have some folks here this morning who are going to receive this proclamation. Ms. Susan Craig, and you may want to add some additional information as well, and introduce our guest that will be receiving the proclamation.
We had an individual who had planned to be here this morning. She has, as of right now, she's not here, and we're not sure that she will make it. But I do have Kathy Smith, I think most of you know Kathy. She's a senior case manager and has been with Henry County for a number of years. And she is going to talk to you for just a minute, if you will allow, about some caregiver tools that she teaches to. The families are the victim when you have a person with Alzheimer's. And as a person whose father had Alzheimer's, I can tell you, it is very life-changing. It's hard to swap places with your parents. And Kathy is one who can offer the tools to help you through that. We also have Pam McCollum, who is the Executive Director of McIntosh Trail Community Service Board for Mental Health and Other Services. We have an Alzheimer's program in Griffin which we may try to model in Henry County if we can acquire some funding from some grant opportunities. Also on our staff, I have Pam Cates, who is a registered nurse. She is actually the program coordinator for in-home health services. And then Clarice Brown, who is the program coordinator for social services. That includes case management. But Kathy teaches the class, and I thought, well, let's give, if you have a minute, we would like for her to offer to the public what she has in place that can be helpful to them. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. As Susan pointed out, I'm Kathy Smith, and I'm a senior case manager with the Senior Services Department. Susan Howington with the County Extension Service and myself were selected to become master trainers of a six-week educational program called Powerful Tools for Caregivers. The program was developed to provide caregivers with tools to emphasize self-care which is needed to take care of themselves as caregivers as well as the care receivers. In our classes, we outline what to do to alleviate the pressures of caregiving or caring for the relatives. We hope in the end to offer relief, new alternatives, a new tool for dealing with functional or difficult challenges. I'm sure some of you may be caring for relatives or know someone who is a caregiver. They may be caring for someone with Alzheimer's, for cancer, for Parkinson's disease, stroke victims, anyone who has a debilitating illness. If you think about it, most caregivers, they don't ask for help. They feel like they should do it on their own, maybe because it's a parent they may be caring for, it could be a spouse, it could be a child. And when that situation is involved, the caregiver often feels like, nobody can do this as well as I can. So they don't readily ask for help. But if you offer it, I'm pretty sure they probably accept it. They often feel that they don't need to step back because they're so close to that person that they're caring for. In our class, we try to teach them that it's okay to ask for help, and we teach them how to ask for help. The role of caregiver is an ever-present one. It's a responsibility that confronts that caregiver every time they walk in that door. The classes teach them how to balance that caregiving responsibility with self-care. We want them to take care of theirselves so that they can take care of the person that's receiving the care. The manual we use, the attendees, they have an opportunity to have access to this manual throughout the six-week series, and they also have the option to purchase this manual if they wish to. The classes for the 2011 year, we've not yet finalized, so we're asking that the community pay attention to the local papers and local cable channels so that they can see the upcoming class dates. Again, I want to thank you for your time.
One thing I'd like to mention before we move on in the agenda is the fact that J.C. Penney is hosting a fun run, 5K, 10K run, on Thanksgiving Day here in Henry County. And the first $20,000 raised from that fun run will be dedicated to senior services in Henry County, and hopefully will help with some programs like this. So for more information on that, I guess you can go to the Penny's website. Do we have it on the county website as well, Julie?
We are advertising it on our website, but I believe it's HuffinForStuffin.org.
Okay, HuffinForStuffin, is that spelled out or the number four, do you know?
It's spelled out, but it's no G on the end of Huffin and Stuffin.
It's the southern version.
Correct.
No G. But you can get more information on that, and hopefully we'll have great participation. It's definitely for a good cause. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Todd Ernst is going to be coming forward at this time, and he will be making a presentation on the Kellytown Park Bike Trails. And is Shane Persaud also going to be joining you for the presentation? Or is he just here for moral support?
I'm here for moral support.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Board. I'm just going to read through this real quick. Brainstorm Henry is an ongoing forum to encourage positive forward-thinking ideas and engage in discussions to improve our community within Henry County. But it is more than that. After starting by gathering and exploring ideas that are not only plausible but achievable, we then work to effect progress through those ideas. What's different about Brainstorm is that we take the energy of those concepts and we build consensus through volunteerism efforts to bring those visions forward into reality. What had once been merely a thought can become something real, an amenity to our community, a boost to our county, and a benefit to our society. If you turn to page three of the packet, it shows a list of discussions that this group, Brainstorm, has been discussing, or has been considering for discussion. It ranges from art walks to a bike hike network through the county, to various other ideas with mixed use, green buildings, recycling, et cetera. One of the ideas that floated to the surface fairly early on was a bike trail on the Kellytown property up at Crumbly Road and Kellytown Road where the county owns land. If you look at the next page, the first map, I'll put it up on the overhead. Kellytown Road is on the right-hand side diagonally. Airline Road is at the very top, and Owen Road is this one here in the bottom. Basically, the county's land extends from Kellytown Road back to these two lakes at the rear of the property. What we're looking at is a network of trails, walking, biking trails, that traverse the land to a point somewhere in here which will align with, it aligns past the 200-foot buffer that the county is requiring, but it allows a little free land in the back for various uses. But what we're looking at is the trails that crisscross the site and provide an opportunity to overlook the lake. It's fairly rolling, there's some trees and some pasture land, so it's a good opportunity to walk and to bike and provide exercise for members of the community. Page two lists the support that we've had so far with this concept. Obviously, it's in Commissioner Basler's district, but we've talked with Parks and Rec, and they have stockpiled telephone poles that we would be able to use for some simple structures on the site, pavilions, bridges, et cetera. We've spoken with the county DOT, we have buy-in from Connecting Henry, from the Fraternal Order of Police, from SORBA, which is the Southeast Off-Road Bike Association. They're very interested in making this a stop along their circuit even, and that could foreseeably provide revenue and advertising for the county. There's area churches that are supportive of this and will provide volunteers. And then Brainstorm Henry has 191 members as of this morning, and many are very interested It's kind of dark, but again, that shows the aerial of the site. You can see this area here is rather wooded, but it would look, at the end, a lot like Dossa Trails in Butts County, if you're familiar with that. It's gravel, it's non-invasive, it winds through the nature, and it would be very easy to maintain. The back end of the property opens up a little more, there's some pasture areas. One has a sort of a high point to the property that overlooks the two lakes. You can see, it has very good visibility of the two lakes. And we would envision a simple structure just to sit and either rest, or have a picnic, or something of the like in that area. And then, the last thing I wanted to display real quick was a couple of concepts of the telephone pole structures, a bridge, and a little sitting pavilion. So it's something that would be very low cost to the county. We can get a lot of volunteer effort and a lot of public support, I believe. Bike stores, Trek and Epic are both very interested in this. SORBA would also bring saplings out to plant in some of the pasture areas, if that's a desire, to have some more trees out there. But there's, at this point, a lot of buy-in, a lot of interest in this, and that's what we're considering and would like to present to you this morning. And I can open for questions.
Any Board member have a question or comment?
Hi, I have a comment. I know Todd has worked, had a lot of hours put into this trying to help us bring something to the Kellytown area. And he and I went out and walked it, I don't know, it's been a couple of weeks ago.
Right.
Trying to get a feel, a better feel for it. But I appreciate what you've done, what you're trying to do for the community.
Absolutely.
Because you go out there and look at this park and how we walked it, I mean, it's perfect for walking trails and bike trails and things of that nature, so we can have places for community get-togethers, and that's what I've kind of advocated over all the time, is to have something in our community that we can, families can come and take part of. But I appreciate what you've done, and I think it has great potential for this. And that's about it.
And a set of families going out of Henry County to Dossa Trails and to, you know, the Rockdale Trails, this is something that can keep our citizens in the county, and also can draw others to the county for tourism or for, you know, advertising other circuits.
Well, I appreciate what you do with Brainstorm Henry because, you know, we're just six people sitting up here. We certainly don't have all the ideas, and it's good to know that our citizens are getting together and talking about the things that are important to the county and things that will help the county as far as tourism or cultural development and things like that. And so I just want to commend you for taking time to do that, because I know the majority of the people that meet with you on a regular basis are all people who have professional careers and spend a lot of time in their jobs. And to get together to do something good and positive for the county is something that I very much appreciate, and I'm sure the other Board members do as well.
Brainstorm was founded out of the, sort of the antithesis of the negativity that streams through the county at times. We wanted to see something that provided a positive amenities to the county that people can enjoy and stay in the county. I guess what I'm looking for this morning, or what we're looking for, is endorsement of this project to move forward. What we would like to do is start clearing trails next spring. I would say that's probably the most realistic timeframe, is starting in the spring and cutting these trails in. Somebody with SORBA has equipment that can sort of flail the ground and clear a path. It's nothing that would be paved or maintained with a hardscape such as that, but it's something that is very environmentally sensitive, but also provides means to enjoy the county.
Mr. Holder.
And I guess I'm going to direct this question at Commissioner Basler. As far as the use of this property, have you determined that it is a passive park and not an active park? Is that a guess?
I think that's what we've discussed, yes. We've had meetings in the community as well. That's what the desire of the community has been.
Okay, so there's not a need for an active park in that area then?
At this point, I can't see it. That's my opinion.
Okay, that's a good question, that. Okay. Because I'd hate to see it be allowed to be developed, even though what we're talking about is not something that's permanent. There's no paving or anything, because you want something that's environmentally friendly and understanding all that. But I just wanted to be sure that that's the direction that we're going in as far as it being a passive park. Okay.
And something else, I think it's an issue that we've got to get with DOT to try to help us and try to get a way to enter the park off Kellytown Road. That's going to be an issue that we've discussed just briefly with Terry in the DOT, but that's something that we're going to get through too, have to work through as well.
Right, right.
But, you know, and I've talked to Tim Coley over the last couple of years about that issue, about ball fields and stuff like that, and we've had several community meetings on that. And I think for the most part, it's a desire to have a passive park in the area. Most all the parks that we build, I mean, in the north end has been ball fields and things of that nature. We don't really have walking trails, besides at Reed's, it'd be the closest one, over at Mosley. But in this area right here, we, there's not really no place to go off into walking trails and things of that nature, or bike trails for that goes.
We've met with neighbors in this subdivision back here, we've met with property owners along Airline Road, and they view this as a very favorable use of the land.
Low impact, poor quality of water.
And this front corner off of Kellytown Road is reserved. I know the county has sort of a long-term vision of that being, a fire station being located up in that district, in that area.
Well, one of us did.
But part of that land can be parceled for a use such as that. And this corner right here at Owen and Kellytown is the Board of Education's land, and that's listed as future, so nothing in the immediate need.
I'll tell you, with the health issues, the health crisis, the obesity crisis that we're facing as a nation, not everybody can play ball. Not everybody can, I'm not going to get out on a ball field. Lord help me, I'm not going to get out on a ball field. Most of us probably shouldn't get out on a ball field at our age, but passive recreation, bicycle trails, walking trails. Oh, I have offended my Board members.
Do we need to cancel that game today, Warren?
But the passive activities are certainly something that I think's going to be beneficial for our citizens as we go forward in the future. So this is a great concept, really is. So I don't think you need a formal resolution or anything like that. I mean, it's just a nod from the Board saying we think this is a great thing to move forward. Would that suffice? Well, those of us at our age, I guess we can all nod. You can try. Okay, well, I think everybody's pretty much in agreement, they think this is a good thing to pursue.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Look forward, we'll be looking forward to some updates in the future.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Todd. Moving on under Finance, the first item is a discussion regarding the 1996 and the 2002 SPOLOST fund budgets, and that's Exhibit Number One. Mike Bush is our presenter on this, Finance Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. In the past, we've may have had some discussions about this 1996 SPOLOST program, that it's still kind of out there and active. And we currently have three projects that are, actually have had expenditures in the last year. And then we have some contingency money that's been basically money that's, when a project finishes, there's money left over and we've moved around. Currently, like I said, there are three projects that have money in it, and what we would like to do is to do a budget amendment, or budget amendment, to take that money and put it into the SPOLOST II and SPOLOST III accounts to go ahead and spend that money so we can close our SPOLOST I program. All it is, is a bookkeeping issue. I will show you the budget amendment for SPOLOST I. Let's see here. This is the actual budget amendment. The yellow highlighted areas on here, take the money and clean everything up, and then the orange ones move the money down so that we can transfer it out. This is the SPOLOST I budget amendment as it is, and it goes into, the biggest portion goes into SPOLOST II. And there's the, all the accounts, the courthouse annex, the Heritage Park, and the contingency that's left over all go into the SPOLOST II account. And then there's one other, there was a project in SPOLOST I, Thurman at Fairview, that there is no Thurman and Fairview activity in SPOLOST II, so we are moving it to SPOLOST III where we do have some activity for that account. That's the gist of the resolution. I will show you that in SPOLOST II. And the main reason we wanted to talk about this is we felt like it was so many pages of numbers, it might be a bit confusing, even though I know I've talked to several of you about some of this stuff. There are 132 accounts in our SPOLOST II program, and on this piece of paper here, there are 18 accounts. These will be the only 18 accounts that are left in SPOLOST II to finish after this transaction is taking place. The budget amendment for, the budget cleanup for the SPOLOST II transaction is rather lengthy, because there's a lot of counts. I mean, we had accounts that had $462 in it, 16 cent in it, 85 cent in it. So we had to basically clean all those up, get all those to zero, so that we can show the, only have the 18 accounts. And what we'll do is we'll freeze all other accounts and make sure the only money can be spent will be spent through these accounts listed here. And the majority of these are roads. There is a contingency line item for roads and a contingency line item for capital. The capital will come back to the Board and get your ideas of where you want to move this capital. The road is actually the money, that contingency money is what we're using to fund the resurfacing that we did in our budget at the beginning of this year. We will also bring back a listing of all those roads and the, how much we've actually gotten completed to this point. We'll get with Terry McMichael and get that report ready to bring back to you as well. I'll show you the budget amendment, and I don't believe anybody can, it's, there's a bunch of line items. So I just thought it would be easier to explain this as to what we're doing. If anybody wants the detail, we've got that detail. Like I say, some of these numbers are very small, and it's just a normal process. When you have a capital, a capital fund, these funds are adopted for a project-length budget. The general fund is adopted on a yearly budget. So if you've got a road that's going to take three years to build and you adopt that budget, you're adopting that budget for that three-year period. It's not adjusted every single year. So that's why occasionally, some of these roads may finish, and we may not move the money for several months until we compile enough of them to come up here. Otherwise, we'd be coming up here nearly every week with a budget amendment, and we didn't want to do that. So this is a cleanup of the SPOLOST I, basically a closeout of the SPOLOST I program, a cleanup of the SPOLOST II to narrow it down to where we only have these 18 accounts. And hopefully, within a year or so, we'll be able to close the SPOLOST II, which is much sooner than we did on the SPOLOST I, and, you know, we still have our SPOLOST III going. I'll take any questions if you have any.
I have a quick question. Under SPOLOST II, you have the fire station number seven, the Salem Fire Station. You're leaving that 220 in there for the sewer.
That is correct. That is correct.
Now, what happens if you want to come back and close out SPOLOST II? If that sewer line hasn't been run at that point, you can't close out SPOLOST II, can you?
That is one of the issues that we've talked about. We may be able to move it to a capital- We may be able to move it to a capital project account, still a capital account, but if it's the only thing left in there, then we can, you know, move the money to there and track it there and close the actual checking account that it's sitting in now, which is a SPOLOST account. If that's the only thing left, we can close that and maintain that activity under a different capital fund.
Okay, because I'm not sure when that's going to even take place.
Yeah. I mean, it was hot and heavy at one point, then we, you know, were able to do some other things, and so it's still there to do, and that's why we left the money there, because the board actually set that money aside for that to be done.
Okay. Any board members have a question?
Mike, I have one question. The second line to Heritage Park, you're showing 400,000, but there's no red dot by there. Is that just a?
Which page are you looking at?
I'm on page.
That one.
Yeah, that one. The second line, there's not a dot by the 400,000 at Heritage Park.
Those dots were just checking balances on there. That, it's just, I didn't, I guess my pen went a little too low. It didn't dot it on there, but yes, that is, it is sitting there. That's good money. That money is, was set aside when we were doing the landscaping where the arena and the rec center sit now. And that was money set aside, you know, during that point in time for DOT reimbursement. And we just haven't done anything with that yet because we're waiting to see what either DOT needed or if it needed to be used at SPOLOST.
I don't know if you could answer this, this is a Latonya question. Also, Latonya, is the only active litigation we got going on is the Patrick Henry Parkway?
We have.
On SPOLOST I, excuse me.
On SPOLOST II, no, sir. There is Fairview Thurman Road, the Chevron Station right there at that intersection. That is scheduled for trial January 2011.
And you have taken in that consideration, these two litigation sections we have, correct? Any movement on Patrick Henry?
Yes, and I can discuss that outside of public purview, but yes, there is some movement there.
Thank you. That's all, ma'am.
Mr. Holder, you got a comment?
I got some questions. I have a few. Mike, on the back, I think it was the previous sheet that you had, it's on the backside of our first page in our book. Okay. Explain to me, now you're saying those on the left column are being shifted into the right column, two, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. This is merely a question that I have. In that left-hand column, there's about, there are about $700,000 worth of projects that were savings or, in District One projects. If you go over to the right-hand column, I don't believe there's one project that's being shifted to anything in my district. Is that correct? With one exception, Lurella State Route 155, the Canal Line Road, $59.50. Is that right?
You're correct.
The other one, oh, there are two more. This may go into SPOLOST II, III, because Lester Mill Road was identified in SPOLOST I, but it was not in SPOLOST II because the commission at that time dropped that road, if you will recall. Tell us where the funding for the paving of Lester Mill Road came from.
All right, that's going to take, that'll take me a second to find it, but I want to think it is a SPOLOST II project, wasn't it? Or is it SPOLOST III?
No, SPOLOST II. It's SPOLOST II, but.
Okay, the funding for that road in SPOLOST II, now, I'm assuming, because I don't have it sitting in front of me, is that it came from, SPOLOST II started as a $110 million project and is up to like a $136 million project. So that additional money that was brought in was funneled into that, to that account to be funded.
Correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm going to defer to Terry McMichael on this one to help me, but I believe on that particular project, the actual funding came as a result of GDOT not allowing us to pave Bill Gardner Parkway and Locust Grove Hampton Road, which was $4 million, and that was in turn put onto Lester Mill. Am I correct on that, Mr. McMichael?
There was discussion, you are correct about GDOT and us not doing Bill Gardner. The $8 million that was coming from ARC was moved to a project on Jonesboro Road, and then the $2 million Goretta money was distributed among some other projects. So when that was done, I think it, and you're right, that was the time that the District Two Commissioner inadvertently, I think, was what happened, left that off the list.
It was during reapportionment in 2000 is when it happened.
And there was an agreement.
And it became a District Two road instead of a District One road.
That's right. Went from there, and I believe one of the pushes at that time, there was a development there that the county had made some agreements or commitments to as well. In order to honor that, then that's when that money was moved to Lester Mill.
Okay, I don't want to get sidetracked on that, but I did want to question where that funding came from. Hampton Locust Grove Road from Strickland to I-75, you're showing $163,000 that came There was, that project might, was part of a phased project for the improvement of that road from I-75 to Strickland, and then from Strickland at the time on to Georgia 20. And the reason it was done that way was because of a bridge replacement at the tile like a river. That's why it had to be in two phases. What about the $183,000? And if we, kind of tying that into another question was, back further in this, you'll see 1.1 million dollars to fund it, and I'm assuming that's going to be the Rocky Creek Road intersection.
The Hampton Locust Grove Road, it was on here at least three different times, three different locations. You've got Hampton Locust Grove, Hampton Locust Grove Road at State Route 155.
That's the intersection.
Right. And you've got Hampton Locust Grove, Strickland to I-75, and then you've got Hampton Locust Grove Road, State Route 20 to I-75.
That's the two phases of that road.
Right. And apparently.
All right, hold, hold on. Do you know why it's phrased that way is it Hampton Locust Grove to Strickland, from I-75 to Strickland? Is because at the time in SPOLOST I, that was not Bill Gardner Parkway. Bill Gardner Parkway was not named Bill Gardner Parkway until after like 2000. So that's the reason in the '96 and all, it picked it up as Hampton Locust Grove to Strickland and in the other phase of it, but it was not Bill Gardner until after that time. From Bill Gardner, Bill Gardner is Hampton Locust Grove Road, basically as we know it, from I-75, well, from Highway 42 to 155. That's where Bill Gardner stops.
Right. And apparently, there was, you know, the part where it says Hampton Locust Grove Road, State Route 20 to I-75, there was nothing ever done in that, in that area of that road. I don't know if that's part of that money you were talking about that was, that we couldn't use, and we moved it to other places, and that's how that 1.1 million got moved to other projects, like you had said just a second ago. I don't know why there was 163,000 left over in the Hampton Locust Grove, Strickland, I-75. Apparently, there was $1,945,000, or I'm sorry, looks like $1,720,000 worth of work done on that road, and that was just money left over that we were basically told that we were going to be able to move that. We still have 224,000 left over to finish something that's going on on that particular section in SPOLOST II, but the 163, they didn't need the whole thing to finish it.
1.7 million on Bill Gardner or Hampton Locust Grove Road, that would have had to been the resurfacing of it. That's the only work that I know what's been done on.
Yeah, I don't.
Is that correct?
That and, that and the engineering that was started to do, I mean, we did pay a lot of money for the engineering that started on that road. So we have spent some money on engineering, and we spent some on resurfacing.
But the rest of that is resurfacing that road?
With the, with the exception of the work that was done at the intersection of 155 and 3.
Yeah, we purchased three parcels.
Commissioner Holder, there was a couple of early acquisitions of right-of-way as well.
Yeah, I understand. I remember when it happened, right there at Williams Plantation or whatever. That was a two, and then we bought some more down at Rocky Creek. I understand that. Okay. Also, in the original SPOLOST, there was $2 million put in for Bill Gardner Parkway from District Two. In fact, you put it in, is when you were the District Commissioner. Has that, and I see now there's a million left in there. Did that million go where?
In SPOLOST I?
No, 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 no. This would be in SPOLOST III.
III? That, that million dollars has not been touched. It's still there.
He's showing 2 million, there's a million, it was 2 million in it initially.
Okay, you're right. The original was 2 million. When we had to reduce down from 240 million to 180 million, the District Two Commissioner at that time reduced that down by $1 million. And that 5,575,000 on each, each commissioner had to give up some dollars. I think it might have been Commissioner Jeffries gave up a million.
No, it was Commissioner Jeffries.
It was, yeah, when the actual.
I put 2 in. Commissioner Jeffries reduced it down to a million.
But I do have, I do have some good news there. We may, we may very well be able to, the way our SPOLOST III collections are going, we may wind up being able to put some of that stuff back in there as SPOLOST.
Okay, going back to my original question. If I'm giving 700, and again, the reason for my question in many times as far as tracking these funds, if I'm giving up 700,000 in projects that I had savings in, and all of that money is being transferred out of my area, should I be concerned?
You actually, one of the things we need to make sure that everybody understands of this 3.3 million dollars in the road contingency, each district gets one-fifth of that for the resurfacing. So you're giving up 700,000 and receiving, you know, one-fifth of 3 million, which is 600,000, something like that? And you also, we had discussed earlier about the 800,000 that's sitting there in capital, breaking that out, $200,000 for Districts I, II, III, and IV. We just did a resolution for District V and gave them 477,000. So you'd really be getting $800,000 back in SPOLOST II for the 700 that you gave up.
Because looking at this, you don't know what net effect you're going to have on your district. These are showing savings that I had. I don't know how many projects that I had that were over too. So, I mean, I'm not saying that the, I'm just saying from a tracking issue, this raises a question.
You are correct. There were, that whole long list on that one side where it was money taken out, that other side is where there was not enough money there and money had to go in, so you may have had a couple of those.
I'm sure there, I'm sure all of us did.
Right. And remember, SPOLOST II, we tried to track it by district, but it was originally not a, you know, by-district type thing like we've done with SPOLOST III. And, you know, to try to clean it up the best we could, we knew that any, any money left over in roads were going to get put into that resurfacing of roads to help our general fund budget. And then, like I say, the capital we have left over is going to be split, $200,000. And actually, last week, they had talked about the 200,000 going back into Sandy Ridge into SPOLOST II because you moved 200 out of SPOLOST III. That's what, that's, that's what that is going to cover, and then each of the other districts would get to choose.
I understand. And in SPOLOST III, I definitely didn't put any resurfacing money in because I wanted to pave as many roads as I could.
Yes, sir.
And I felt that that was the most important in my area. So we'll have more discussion. I know this is not due till tomorrow, and I will certainly talk to you later today.
That's fine.
My next, she had a few more notes. I didn't know if you were going to go through those this morning. Any other?
We won't do that.
You're going to save those, okay.
You said you got, we came in here a month or so ago for your Fairview Rec Center and did a budget amendment for 477,000. So you've got your 200 and 277 more. That's why we basically said at the end, we would split it amongst the four that haven't recently received anything from that funding. There were some rock issues you had, and then.
$170,000 worth of rock issues.
Right, and then FFNE furniture fixtures made up the other 200 and something thousand.
If it's all the same to you, I'd like to see if we can't find us another 200,000 somewhere.
Mike?
Is basketball courts your obligation?
Oh, are they?
None of those gone, let's see. I'm sorry.
Any other questions or comments on this item? If not, there is a resolution before you, and I'll entertain a motion.
But there's no.
We're not doing an action today? Okay, then why don't we have a resolution in the book?
It's in there for tomorrow, too. I'm sorry.
All right. The next item is a budget update and other discussion items.
Okay. I'm going to start with that SPOLOST since it's the first page on there. This is our SPOLOST III collections. And in October, we collected about 2.4 million dollars, 2.3 million dollars, which takes us up to, on 180 million SPOLOST program, we're at 93.4% collection. And the part that's really good about this is if you look right below it, at this point last year compared to this point this year, we are 3.88% higher in collections. If we maintain that rate, we will put probably 10 to 15 to 20 million dollars. Instead of having 180 million dollar program, we'll have a 200 million dollar program and be able to come back and give money back to each district, which is what we thought to begin with, but you can't, if we had left it at 240, we'd be sitting at a 60% collection rate, and we didn't think that was prudent to do, so that's why we went back to the 180. And we hope that we continue to maintain this collection and that we, you know, are able to come back in and add additional dollars back into that SPOLOST program, SPOLOST III This is the first time this year that we've been up before the board to make a presentation on the current monthly revenues and expenditures, so we're going to talk about three months at one time. As you know, the majority of the, the largest portion of our dollars comes in with our tax dollars, and they go out in September and do back in November 20th, 16th, somewhere around that area. So we'll see a large jump in our revenues. And basically, what is, it's, your expenditures are fairly flat all year long around that $10 million mark, and your revenues will collect probably $64 million or $70 million worth of our revenues in the first, you know, through November, and then we'll collect smaller portions through just normal collection processes the rest of the year. And so basically, our revenue jumps up and then kind of slides back down, but at the end, what we're hoping is that they meet at the end, and that's what we've got planned. And I want to show you, I printed this this morning, and I forgot to add a third month on the year-to-date budgets, but this is the expenditure side of it. Last year, we had a budget of $10,498, $498,424 per month. This year, you know, we reduced our budget immensely, and it's $9,700,000 per month. And this past month, we spent 8.8. We spent 25 million year-to-date out of a budget of 29 million, and if you compare that to last year, we'd spent 30 million with 31. So we're actually better, we're doing better this year than we did last year, and it's because, you know, about midpoint last year is where we started tightening down and looking at everything and making sure that, you know, any small equipment, any travel, I mean, any education and training, anything that had anything to do with not a normal day-to-day business thing, we started looking at to make sure that it was right. And we have set up tools to where those, those things actually travel through the county manager's office to make sure he thinks this is something that needs to be. And our county manager has questioned, you know, a lot, a lot of things, and actually brought department heads in and discussed it before approving or disapproving those issues. So I think that's one of the reasons why we are so much better on our expenditures. We also, it will change a little bit because once you have a month where you get three paychecks instead of two, it'll jump back up a little bit, but that's, but we are still, you know, a little less than $4 million, less expenditures than we have budgeted to this point. On the revenue side, for the first two, for the first two months of the year, we collected about $6 million, and those are the months that you don't really see anything other than your local option sales tax money that comes in, and the courts, they operate a month behind, so we don't get the revenue for July until August, so that's why the very first month was small. And if you look, we collected 9.6 million dollars this month, when we're supposed to collect about 9.7, same thing we spend. The budget is flat on both of those, but we actually collected $9 million this month. We got our insurance premium check in this month, which was a big check. So for year-to-date, we've only collected 14 million of the 29 million that was budgeted, but again, as you see, that's still three, a little better than $3 million, better than we did last year this time. And it is, and actually, the biggest portion of that is taxes coming in. We had a lot of people that are paying prior-year taxes to the tax commissioner. We were able to get our tax bills out early this year based on the lack of appeals that we had, so people are actually paying their taxes, you know, in advance of what they did in the past. So that's why we think we've got a, you know, we're sitting there a little better than $3 million ahead of where we were last year. So we're ahead of collecting revenues, we're ahead of expenditures, so we, we feel like we're, you know, we're tracking pretty good at this point in the year. And if y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions or comments?
Comment, it's, the, the actual due date on taxes is not even due yet, so...
Correct.
You know, to have collected this much prior to a due date is, is very good, and if you come back by, in January, you ought to see a, a big difference, because the majority of the people, myself included, will pay when it's due.
Right. This is, this is for the month of September, because October just ended, so not the next month, but the next month that we come in here, you'll see, you know, you'll see revenues of 75, 80 million with a budget of, you know, 40, and then what it'll do every month, we'll collect, you know, roughly 6, 7 million, and it'll come back down. It, it's got one of those real big high points and then like a slide back down, and then, you know, basically, we start at the same point and we end at the same point, although, you know, hopefully, we'll keep the expenditures flat or even lower.
We just hope we can end up the same place we started.
That's right, we want, that's exactly right, so.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to public comments, did anybody sign up for that today? Mr. County Manager, anything for public session?
No, ma'am.
Ms. County Attorney?
No, ma'am.
Upcoming meetings and events, tomorrow, November 2nd, at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular meeting. Also, this is Election Day, and we encourage all of our citizens to please exercise their right to vote. It's a very important election. Thursday, November the 11th, all county offices will be closed in observance of Veterans Day. There'll be a number of celebrations going on throughout the county. We ask you to, to check the county website, I know there's something at Heritage Park that day, and please come out and show your support for our veterans. Monday, November 15th, at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular board meeting. Also, Tuesday, November 16th, is a regular board meeting, that will be at 6:30 p.m. Thursday, November 25th, and Friday, November the 26th, all county offices will be closed in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. At this time, I do need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential or pending litigation, land acquisition, or personnel matters.
Mr. Bowman? I do have a comment, and it doesn't relate to anything we've talked about today.
Okay.
But I've had a number of calls, and I, I'm assuming that some of the others have too, about the, what we're seeing is the signs around the county that are saying safety check. And these signs, I, I made some inquiries to find out, you know, what this is about, because normally, you don't get a warning sign out in the front saying, oh, by the way, just up ahead, we're going to have a safety check. This is part of a program put on by the National Traffic Safety Foundation, it's, a lot of it's paid for by that, it's, it's not a county initiative. It's, we were one of the counties that were chosen to do that, and some of my, some of my constituents have said that it's a effort by the county to raise money. It's really not that, that they're being timed, that, they, they being the national transportation, they have actually selected the site, the time of day, and a lot of the other issues that are going with that, so I thought it'd be an appropriate time to mention this on, you know, on our broadcast, so that the citizens would know that, you know, this is being done. It, it's a, it's a study, actually a study that's being done. Now, are there some that are being caught by not maybe having a, a driver's license, or they're tagged in expired? Sure it is, but that's kind of what it's about, it's that, click it or ticket, there's a number of issues there. But I just wanted to, to be able to tell the public that this is an initiative that's not a Henry County initiative, it's an initiative that's been, actually, I believe, but shouldn't it being somewhat funded also by that group, or, so, and so that, you know, the funds are actually coming from that group to do it, so I felt like this would be appropriate time to tell the public what's going on, ma'am.
Now, I appreciate you mentioning that, because when the signs went up, I had the same questions, I thought, what's going on? We need to find out. And just as a side note to go along with that, my husband made a comment, he's retired from another police agency, a larger agency here in, in metro Atlanta, and one of the things that he commented on was that just the presence of seeing more officers out is a deterrent to criminals coming into Henry County and, and casing places and, and doing the smashing grabs and things like that. They, they don't want to come into an area where there's high police visibility, because they want to fly under the radar.
And, you know, but one other thing I think that's very important to remember is that about four years ago, Commissioner Basler and myself, 4th and 5th District, were working very hard to get a precinct put up on the north end of the county, and that has shown to be very effective, because that, just having that, like you say, it's 100%, having police presence there, and we've caught a lot of, a lot of people coming in from the other counties that were, you know, wanting to do some things that we don't want them to do on our end of the county, so, but it's worked out very well, and, and you're 100% correct, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I need a motion to convene into executive session?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Basler, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0. I need a motion to reconvene into public session. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0. I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0. At this time, we need to amend the agenda out of public necessity. Mr. Stamey?
Yes, ma'am. To a resolution authorize the acquisition of 0.91 acres of right-of-way, more or less, 0.066 acres of permanent easement, more or less, 0.143 acres of temporary easement, more or less, 0.008 acres of driveway easement, more or less, and landlot 152 and 169 of the 7th District, Henry County, Georgia, by the negotiated contract with Tom DeNash.
Have a motion for an amendment and an approval of that, it's their second. Second by Mr. Roark, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0. If there's no further business to come before this board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Roark, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0. We stand adjourned.